Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting of June 10th. Tonight's virtual meeting is being broadcast live on South Coast Channels 29 and 329, and it will be streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. Again, I'd like to thank Executive Director SMC Mark Sarah, as well as the IT Director for Shrewsbury, Brian LaRue, for helping us with each of these meetings. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on June 17. The public participation portion of our meeting is suspended due to the fact this is a virtual meeting. However, the public can email any questions and comments to the school committee at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.ma.us. First on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Does anybody have anything this evening? John?
Yeah, thanks, Sandy. I just want to thank the leadership team at Shrewsbury High School for what was really a great week of graduation festivities. I know we've talked a lot about this over the last month or so, but yesterday we had our diploma ceremony. It's very well done. I also recognize that this is happening every day for five days this week, 100 families per day. I know they just wrapped up, I think, Day Three. Most of the coordination involved, most of the people involved with coordinating are not watching this right now because they're probably wrapping up. But to Todd, Maureen, PJ, Greg, Jeff, Jay Costin, everyone involved in organizing and celebrating Class of 2020, job well done. From award ceremonies to the parade, to the speeches, just the in-person diploma presentations by families. It really feels, from my perspective as a parent, like we received more than we would have under normal circumstances, right? And just really special time. And I've always said this, and I really feel it now, having gone through it with my son. You know, SHS is really a first-class operation from my perspective. I've seen it from many different perspectives, but I just remember the excitement that I had when Jack was in eighth grade, thinking about his entry into high school, knowing all the great support that they have there. And it exceeded expectations for me, and I appreciate them going above and beyond. It's very, very well done. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Anyone else? I'd just like to mention that last night, the Beal Building Committee, Dr. Sawyer, myself, Mr. Collins, and the rest of the committee were able to go to the new Beal site and had a tour with our construction crew, with Fontaine Brothers, as well as Lemo Pagano Architects there as well. It was great to be out, great to see everyone, and it's coming along really well. It is on time, which is a great thing in light of some of the construction issues other building projects have had throughout the state. So, nice to see it and great to work with these Fontaine Brothers and LPA. It's just a really well-run organization, so it's interesting and wonderful to get out. So, thank you. The next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I would concur. Last night was very exciting to actually be able to walk inside the structure as it's constructed to date, shaping up to resemble the plan that you see on paper and the architects' drawings. And it is going to be a really wonderful school-building facility for students in the town for decades to come. We'll have a few pictures. I'll share on social media when I have a chance, but really is a wonderful site for a school. And I concur that the team of PMA consultants as our project manager, LPA architects, Lemo Pagano, and Fontaine Brothers are doing a remarkably excellent job. So, thank you to all of them. I also concur, Mr. Wensky. I was able to be up at the high school on Monday for some of the diploma ceremonies, and they are truly, I think, first class is a good descriptor. I know parents and students, or graduates in particular, are enjoying these, and we're very happy we're able to make that work in a very, just a classy way all around. And looking forward to our families tomorrow evening. I also want to share, also thank our principals, assistant principals, secretarial staff, other support staff who have been organizing the return of our students' belongings. That's been happening over the past week, and will continue in the next week at various elementary, middle, and schools and high school next week. Although it sounds like something simple, given all the restrictions we have and limited staff on site, there definitely has been a lot of logistical challenges. And I really appreciate all the hard work people did to make that run smoothly, to help return things to our students and their families. This is the last full week of remote learning. Again, I want to sincerely thank all of our educators for their hard work and the skill that they've brought to this endeavor. Thank you for the support our parents have provided, and certainly I want to thank our students for hanging in there during this very unexpected and challenging time over the last couple of months. And then finally, relative to the ongoing national crisis relative to racism and how we're working to address this issue in our school district, I did want to let the committee know and the public that we are in the beginning stages of setting up some conversations with recent alumni, students, families, and staff particularly, to talk about this particular issue rather. Want to hear their perceptions, their questions, their concerns. We'll also be reviewing and have begun reviewing some high-quality opportunities for professional development for our staff. And we hope to receive the Equity Audit Report from the Aspen Valley Collaborative soon. We may be able to present something as soon as next week's school committee meeting with information with that report, which will certainly be a timely piece of information at this point. I know the school committee is going to be addressing this with their first agenda item, but I wanted to let the community know that we're already, where we have the opportunity working to start to address these issues, which will be ongoing work, of course. And that is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer.
Chair, if you might, I'm sorry, I missed my opening before. I just wanted to do an extra shout-out to our PTOs. In particular, I'm thinking about our patent PTO. This week organized a surprise goodbye parade for Wendy Bell, who we all know is moving on. And it was a wonderful event and a reminder yet again of all the parents and the work that they do on not only educating their children, but now figuring out innovative ways to continue to build community in this virtual space. And it was great to see Ms. Bell off in some sort of more proper fashion. And I really appreciate all the work that they've been doing to figure out how to continue to support our schools. So, I wanted to thank them for all of that work.
Thanks, Lindsay. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is the school committee resolution condemning racism. And I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Palace as he spearheaded this effort for the school committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Fritz. Colleagues, at our meeting last week, I mentioned my intention to bring forward a resolution in the wake of the killing of George Floyd, expressing the school committee's sentiments with regard to the murder and racism more broadly. And I noted at the time, and I'll reiterate now, my feeling that it is important for Shrewsbury Public Schools to speak up in light of this incident and in light of the conversations that have taken place since. I commend again the superintendent for his statement last week. I feel it's important for the school committee to go on record here. You know, sometimes people who are in political positions, as the five of us are, make statements and the public perceives them as hollow. I think it's important for the school committee to weigh in on this situation because we have not only staff members of color, but we have families of color who send their children to be with Shrewsbury Public Schools for hours and hours a day. And there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of anger, and those are certainly justified sentiments. And I think that people are looking towards Shrewsbury Public Schools where their kids spend time, and they want to know what we think and how we feel. And so, to that end, I drafted a resolution that was included with your meeting materials. That draft resolution largely remains intact. As a result of some feedback, I've received sense in having some conversations. I have added to that resolution. So, as opposed to moving that we adopt the resolution as printed, I'm going to move that we adopt a resolution that I will read aloud in its entirety, and that is in part to encompass the additions that have been made since. That is also because I think it's important that the community hear this resolution aloud. For those of you who are looking along with the draft that was included with your materials, just to see where there is new text. There was additional text at the end of the second bullet point, and there is an additional third bullet point added. So, there's a short bullet point after the second that is new. So, to that end, I hereby move that the Shrewsbury School Committee adopt the following resolution. The Shrewsbury School Committee hereby condemns the murder of George Floyd that took place in Minneapolis, Minnesota on May 25, 2020, recognizes and condemns the ongoing impact of racism, both overt and structural, on Black Americans that continues in our nation. All individuals and organizations, including Shrewsbury Public Schools, have an obligation to recognize and work to remove attitudes and barriers that lead to inequitable treatment based on race. Recognizes that education is an important vehicle to address racism. We must better understand our history as it relates to racism and engage in critical conversations on the topic. Recomits to the elements of our Shrewsbury Public Schools' core values that our district honor each person's individuality, celebrate our community's diversity, and support school cultures of mutual acceptance and respect, and strives to create opportunities for all students to achieve success. And finally, commits to supporting the superintendent's announced intention that we will do better for our students, families, and staff members of color, and that a conscious and deliberate effort be made on that front. And I would be looking for a second.
Okay, we've moved to second, but before we move forward with the vote, is there any, anybody have any comments before we go forward? Lindsay?
I want to just commend Mr. Palace for pushing this issue. I think it's the right move, and I think it's important that the community know that we stand behind the superintendent's efforts. And I really do appreciate, in particular, the addition that we know that education is one of the tools to combat racism. And we are a community now with many people on this screen committed to educating our youngsters and ultimately the community that we live in, and we helped to create that. So, whether it's talking about issues of history that I've had many conversations with people where our histories books at times have been muddled across America, where we need to really acknowledge our past and build up our ability to engage in important and meaningful dialogue, and we serve an important role in doing that. So, I want to thank you, and I am certainly in full support.
Excellent. Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else have any comment? I'm not seeing any. Again, thank you, Jason, for spearheading this, bringing it forward. It's, and as you and I talked about it, it isn't just words on paper. It's action, and that is something that our community and our schools have always done. And I have the full support of, you know, Dr. Sawyer and his staff, knowing that this is something that we will continue to work at getting better at. So, again, thank you, Jason. Really appreciate it. So, there's nothing further. May I have a roll call vote? Dale?
Aye.
Lindsay?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again.
And I will send a copy of the updated resolution to Mrs. McCollum, Mark Clark, for meeting materials.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, next, we are going to have an update from Dr. Sawyer and District Administration on the school district's response to COVID-19 school closure.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I'm going to share my screen. And I think I need to pick the wrong one. Hold on one moment. Can you just give me a thumbs up that you can see that? Okay, so again, we'll begin with the key messages that we've been giving throughout this time period that our health and well-being, of course, of our students, families, and staff is our first priority. That during this extraordinary time, we believe it's everyone's responsibility in our community to respond to this challenge, and that we've continued to support our students, families, and staff from a distance, and with the main goal of empowering continuing student learning. One thing, there's been a lot of questions, of course, and there's been some published reports recently relative to the planning for reopening schools. I want to make it clear to those watching this evening that despite some reports in the media, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has not yet released guidelines for reopening schools next fall. We have been planning for various contingencies here in Shrewsbury based on some guidance and some signals that the department has communicated. So far, they issued something last week around the expected types of personal protective equipment, or PPE, that would be expected of school districts. So, districts could begin procuring those items. They also issued just late on Sunday night some programming, guidance around summer programming. And Ms. Belcito will speak to that in a bit. But the commissioner has indicated, and he communicated yesterday with superintendents that despite some reports in the newspapers based on conjecture, based on that initial guidance provided, in terms of guidance for the opening of next school year, that will be coming sometime in the next couple of weeks from the state. Commissioner has also indicated that it's expected to be pretty directive. So, although we've been planning for contingencies, we also need to await what the state is going to be requiring of us. There are some potential scenarios, of course, based on what's happening in other countries, other states that have reopened schools. I expect that various measures will be required to be in place. That could include the use of masks by students and staff, the limitation of the numbers of students that could be present in an entire school or in one classroom space at a time. We certainly need to be planning for potential hybrid model of in-person and remote learning, particularly if we need to limit the numbers of students in school at one time, where there may be time periods, or whether that's some kind of cycle where some portion of a week or during a week, they would be in school, and then alternatively, learning from home in a remote setting. We also need to anticipate there could be interruptions. If there was a resurgence of the virus, all the in-person learning could again have to pivot very quickly to remote learning. So, all these are all things that we're reviewing and making contingency plans for, and we are awaiting the state guidance regarding these potential scenarios. As we do that, I just want to emphasize there is great uncertainty right now, both regarding what the public health regulations will be, how the phase reopening of the state evolves, how hopefully the metrics continue to improve in our state. And we also don't know yet what our financial resources will be for next year because that budgetary information is not known. So, I do appreciate everyone's patience as we do everything we can to prepare, but we await key elements and key information to be able to plan effectively. At this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Belcito, who will talk a bit about an update regarding extended school-year services that take place during the summer for students who have the need due to their learning disabilities. So, Ms. Belcito.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. We certainly recognize that summer programming is an essential time for some students to maintain skills, prevent regression, and to continue to engage in learning and social skills. Most recently, we received additional communication on the evening of June 7 from the Department of Education to review health and safety updates for how we might hold in-person instructional opportunities for students with disabilities in order to provide extended school-year programming as specified in IEPs. The Special Education Administration has collaborated closely with our Director of Nursing, Noel Freeman, and our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Patrick Collins, to ensure our students' health and well-being remain a top priority during this crisis. Consideration is given to the nature and severity of a student's needs and the barriers they pose on a student's ability to access remote learning. Determination of in-person instruction will be based on providing services to our most vulnerable learners, who receive multiple services during the course of the year, who need more time to learn new skills to increase the success of re-entry to school in the fall. In addition to learning needs, we recognize that some families of the aforementioned students may have concerns about the safe and healthy health of their children and may choose not to have them participate in person if we have that opportunity. Next slide. The guidance for in-person extended school-year programming will be limited to half-day programming. For those whom we can offer in-person programming, there may be additional supplemental remote learning opportunities. Given this guidance, students will be signed either AM or PM in-person sessions. Unfortunately, due to operations planning, we are unable to honor session requests. We understand the importance of students' access to instruction, and therefore, all students' summer programming this year, whether in-person or remote, will be six weeks, July 6 through August 13, Monday through Thursday. Due to all of these factors and more, we are just not able to offer in-person services without further compromising the health and safety of our students and staff. Therefore, remote services will begin on July 6 for all students who qualify for extended school-year services. Following the guidance from the Department of Education, we will continue to be hopeful that we will be able to introduce in-person services for some portion of the summer for some of our students, but we are not able to confirm that at this very moment. We will keep in very close contact with our families as we proceed. We are kindly asking that parents take the time to provide input to their child's unique learning needs by completing an extended school-year services survey that was sent out this afternoon to those qualified families in an email, actually from myself. The input will help guide our staffing and operations planning to ensure the high-quality programming that the Shrewsbury Public Schools demonstrates. And as you can see on this slide, we know that the extended school-year services, whether it's remote or even in-person, won't quite look like this photo that was from just last summer. And I chose to share this photo this evening as we honor one of our retirees and some staff that worked within the program. So, here are some of our students from the ELC at Shrewsbury High School. And we sure do miss those smiles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belcito. At this point, I'd like to shift to an update regarding the next year's budget. Mr. Collins will provide some information relative to financial and operational issues.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So, just a few updates relative to development of next fiscal year budget, fiscal '21. Last evening, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, they took a formal vote to adopt a so-called 1/12 budget to cover the month of July 2020, which is the first month of the fiscal year. And this is an action that many, if not most, of the other municipalities in the state will be adopting as well. It allows a community to proceed with spending public monies without having a formal or regular budget process having been completed. So, it goes to the so-called default 1/12 budget process. And that's part of the statute that the law affords the Board of Selectmen in a municipal district to take that action and then submit that budget to the Mass Department of Revenue on behalf of all the municipal departments, including and including also the school department. There are various amounts that have been allocated for each of the municipal departments and school department. And the amount allocated for the school department for July is $5.5 million. That amount happens to represent approximately 1/12 of our current year fiscal '20 budget. Next slide. So, what will this money be used for? This money, for what types of expenditures do we typically have in the month of July? So, certainly, we have expenditures related to funding salaries and wages for our full-year staff, which includes all of the central office staff, administrators, and support staff. Also, secondary school, middle school, and high school principals and their full-year staff as well. Expenditures related to the program Mrs. Belcito just talked about, which is our summer special education program, starting on July 6. Typically, in July, we are billed or invoiced for leasing payments, part of ongoing existing leasing payments for technology hardware. And so, those payments come due, we'll be able to provide payments for those. Same, kind of the same vein, many of the software licensers, licenses are renewed during the month of July. And so, this funding will be able to provide payment for those as well, along with annual professional association membership dues, which are very important, that we retain membership for our professional development activities, our networking activities ongoing, and then just general office supplies, custodial supplies, and other miscellaneous items. So, that's typically what would happen in the month of July. Just for context, and so that the school committee is kind of reassured about this funding level, typically, the last three Julys, for the last three fiscal years, our total expenditures for the month of July have been in the range of $1 million to $1,200,000. And so, we are certain that this maximum authorization, if you will, up to $5.5 million will certainly suffice for our expenditures, and even if we incur some other COVID-related expenses. But it is also extremely important that, and we will, of course, be extremely judicious in making any expenditure for fiscal '21 because any dollars that we do spend will count towards the eventual fiscal '21 budget that gets approved by town meeting, which, again, we hope is sometime in late summer, possibly early fall, but we're hoping for late summer, maybe mid-August would, might be the timeframe if the state completes its budget process sometime in July. Next slide. So, that's information on the budget for fiscal '21 and how we're going to proceed without having a town meeting like we normally do in the month of May. And then on to some financial matters related to COVID-19. And I know some of this might be repetitive, but for people that are tuning in and haven't seen prior meetings, the town of Shrewsbury, like every other community in the Commonwealth, has been allocated a certain amount of funding from federal stimulus funding from the CARES Act. It's a per capita amount for the total population of $90 per person. So, Shrewsbury's allocation is just over $3.3 million. But this is very different than what some people might have experienced in terms of receiving a stimulus refund from their tax return. Those are, again, that might come in the form of a check or a debit card or electronic payment to their bank account, and people can use that money for whatever they please. This $3.3 million CARES Act funding is very different. It is use restricted and time restricted. And the uses for which we can use this money has to be directly related to COVID-19-related expenditures. And secondly, the funds are eligible for use only up to December 30. So, it's both use and time restricted. It's not some sort of general fund receipt. The town has to make application for these funds using a very detailed application with lots of justification around providing explicit details of each type of expenditure in certain categories that have been defined by the federal government. And as of right now, this $3.3 million, again, is only related to COVID-19-related expenditures between March and December. So, we've been in conversation with the town manager's office and had a conversation with him about uses of these funds, and that leads to the next slide, which is that we have submitted for reimbursement to access that funding stream expenditures related to personal protective equipment that Dr. Sawyer referenced earlier, that will be required for both summer special education services, if those are at some point provided in person, and then also for the fall reopening. So, we've made some expenditures now to source things like masks, hygiene items, hand sanitizer, face shields, disposable gowns and bonnets and booties for school nurses. And those are all eligible categorical expenditures out of that CARES funding. Also, from your last meeting, you know that we need to procure and have in place this capacity for continuation of remote learning next fall because we're not really sure how we're going to or when we're going to reopen or under what circumstances, if it's a hybrid model or alternating schedule, or if we have some sort of flare-up and need to, again, close the entire district. So, we need that ready remote learning capacity. So, software services, like the programs Mrs. Clodder talked about, Alex Freckle, ST Math, those software programs we've submitted for reimbursement for, along with additional iPads to ensure that we have one-to-one device for all of our K-12 students. Again, all of those things would be necessary to work in whatever environment that we're faced with, whether it's in-person or hybrid come the fall, or having intermittent closures. And we know that, given the additional procurement of one-to-one devices for that capacity at the K-4 level, that we're absolutely going to need additional IT support to support staff and students in terms of managing those systems. So, I'll turn it back to Dr. Sawyer for any additional information related to... So I'll turn it back to Dr. Sawyer for any additional information related to this COVID-19 fiscal update.
All right, and I know Ms. Clodder will add some information in a moment, but I do want to underscore and thank Mr. Collins, Mr. Brian LaRue, our Director of Information Technology, along with Ms. Clodder, our Curriculum Assistant Superintendent, relative to this plan for providing devices. The elementary leadership team, Shawna Powers, our Director of Instructional Technology, all concurred that in order to be able to be as effective as we need to be in a hybrid remote environment next fall, our elementary students need access to a device. So you know, many of our students were able to share a device, say with a middle school sibling who had an iPad already, the way things were structured this spring. But that won't be a reality in the fall. And so being able to stretch the life of the iPads that our eighth graders and 12th graders will be turning in after their four-year cycle with those students, as well as to take advantage of the ones we have, and then utilize this federal funding piece for grade three and four, who also have to take the MCAS on using technology, which has been the case for the last couple of years. I think it's a good plan, and I absolutely concur that we do need additional IT support staffing. That's something that Mr. LaRue has made an excellent case for in recent years. We haven't been able to give him the level of staffing support we would have liked. But given the demands of remote learning, even now, they have been stretched over the course of the last couple of months. And then with these additional devices, it will be critical to add that position in next year's budget, which, of course, we're very mindful of any expense. But this is essentially the cost of doing business under these circumstances. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Clodder, who has a few pieces of information to share before we wrap up.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. We certainly faced our share of challenges, both with the pandemic and with the murder of George Floyd and all that that brings to our families. I want to also begin by expressing some gratitude for the bright spots and the learning that we've done together through the challenges. I think one of the powerful lessons we've learned as we reflect midway in the last week of remote learning is that we've been able to strengthen the relationships among colleagues within the school department, but also in the community as a result of some of the challenges we faced. I want to start off by just saying I'm really proud of the way our allied arts departments have found ways around the limits of remote learning to continue to engage students in special subjects, much like Mr. Wensky was talking about, the high school team finding how to hold on to the very best moments of graduation in a remote situation. Our virtual art shows, remote dance-offs, 5Ks and field days, music lessons at a distance have all really enriched the remote learning experience. And I don't want to overlook that in talking about the powerful ways we've adjusted the classroom learning. If you haven't had a chance to see the art show, Mrs. LeBlanc has made it easy to access in the community bulletin. And the format also makes it easy to look at art relative to your child's level. Just a note, because the work is so vast and represents the entire district, the selections reflect a sample, so you might not find your child's artwork. But I think it helps give you a sense of the talent in our colleagues and the impact it has on students. The next acknowledgement I have is really has to do with a different kind of collaborative relationship, and that's the one we're building with the community. Dr. Lizat's position has afforded us ways to connect in ways that are new. And I want to acknowledge her efforts to, most recently, seek some help from Staples, and they really helped us to get the word out around summer learning resources. So I want to acknowledge Jim Ryan, who's the General Manager at Staples, and Louis, who's the Print and Marketing Supervisor, and Kevin, the Print and Marketing Associate, who helped to print all these postcards so that we could distribute them between ordering them on Friday and getting them on Sunday. They really expended a great deal of effort and contributed almost, you know, $1,600 in materials to help us get the word out in a way that was cost-free to the to the district. This golden ticket is a reminder card for every student, which helps us to link in one spot all of the resources that are going to be available for summer learning. And whether you access it with a link or with a QR code, you'll get to a place where you can see firsthand some of the ways to get smarter this summer. So I really encourage parents to put that card in a place on the fridge or on your corkboard, wherever you're going to see it as a reminder, because it's a one-stop shop to get to all that you need for summer support. And this summer, regular practice is going to be more important than ever. And finally, this headline was taken from Edutopia, which is a web-based resource for educators. In the wake of the death of George Floyd, our educators, much like the community at large, grappling with how to address issues of race and equity. And this slide serves to remind me about the contributions local groups have had, both informal ways and informal ways to compile resources to support families in talking about race with children. Children recognize difference and reflect bias much sooner than we think, as early as preschool. And discussing race and sometimes even providing information to children can be uncomfortable. But doing it makes students feel enabled and empowered to talk about their experiences and the very real challenges, particularly that people of color face in our society. And we know that when we talk through an issue, we're better able to find a way forward. So we're compiling a resource, both to address the specific topic of talking about racism, but also to raise awareness about books of featuring students of color doing very typical things. Because I think it's important that, you know, when we think of people of color, we think of them in dimensions just as we do with any other other person. And sometimes I think in focusing on what we need to fix, we lose sight of the very real ways and very normal challenges that that everyone faces as human beings. So we plan to highlight some specific text helpful to grade spans. And this information will be included in our summer resources, but also as a standalone resource on the district website eventually. Now, this brings me to the main focus of my update this evening, which is the District Student Opportunity Act Plan. As you know, Chapter 70 Program is the major program for state funding aid to public elementary and secondary schools. And based on the formula, Shoesbury's Chapter 70 funding has only increased by minimum aid over the last many years. And that will be the same case next year, unless Chapter 70 funding is cut because of the state budget crisis. Currently, we're slated to receive an additional $30 per student of minimum aid, which totals $186,210, which, as you know, is not nearly sufficient to cover our additional costs. Because of the new Student Opportunity Act, state legislation is tied to Chapter 70. Starting this year, any increases in Chapter 70 funds must be aligned with certain requirements in the Student Opportunity Act. And state educational priorities as an accountability measure are included in that. So this was designed because districts with high poverty rates were slated to receive significant additional funding. And as such, every district is now required to submit a plan for how these funds will be expended. The plan we will ask the school committee to approve next week will show that these funds will be expended on two state priorities that are also priorities for our district, expanding full-day kindergarten access and providing inclusive special education through co-teaching. Again, to be clear, this is not a new source of funding that we otherwise would not have received, but rather a new state requirement that we indicate how we will spend the small increase in Chapter 70 funding we receive each year. And given the state budget crisis, it's unclear at this time if we will even receive any increase or have a reduction for the coming year. So how are districts being directed to spend Student Opportunity Act funds? This slide illustrates that the purpose of the Student Opportunity Act overall is to close achievement gaps. And the advice from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education was to commit to a small number of high-impact evidence-based programs. These are some examples of evidence-based programs. The DESE was also clear that districts can adopt, deepen, or continue evidence-based programs that are already in use. And so with that in mind, we chose to focus on our strategic plan and to apportion these funds towards the goals I mentioned, which are inclusion, co-teaching, and full-day K. Specifically, we were going to allocate $96,200 for advancing the co-teaching inclusion special education programming next year. And the remaining $90,010 will be allocated to offsetting full-day kindergarten costs. You'll recall that to form our strategic plan, we engaged the community and identified needs, and these are reflected in the decisions we made regarding the Student Opportunity Act funds. Again, these are not new dollars, but funds we had already earmarked for Shoesbury Public Schools. What's new is the documentation that's required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So part of the documentation entails reaching out specifically to the community for feedback. And so to complement tonight's presentation, I'll be sending a follow-up communication to Shoesbury families. And in that document, I will include a link to a Google form so that we can collect the thoughts, concerns, and questions of the community. Again, engaging community, engaging the community's partners as a shared value, and the feedback is important to us regardless of the requirements of the act. But we look forward to hearing what people think of that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Clodder. So at this point, that's the update we have for the school committee. We're happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
There we go. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Jason?
I just want to thank the superintendent in particular for the update with regard to the state guidance. I had heard from a few parents, I know there was a great deal of media attention around some guidance that was, as I understand it, intended for summer programming that caused a significant amount of alarm. And I know that it's a preference of the administration not to put the apple cart before the horse, so to speak. But I do appreciate that clarification, because I know that I too saw some of those media reports and was substantially alarmed at the resource outlet that that would require. But I just want to thank the superintendent for specifying that we are still awaiting that state-level guidance.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone else have any comments or questions? I'm seeing none. Great. And thank you to Dr. Sawyer and staff. I think this is very helpful that we're getting these updates really on a weekly basis. The community is getting real-time information. And I've heard that it's very welcome, especially now where things are a little different. To have this information upfront is much, is really beneficial. So thanks a lot. And I know a lot of work goes into all of this. So thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is student recognition. Shoesbury High School's Rocket League and League of Legends teams defended their state champion esports titles once again for the spring 2020 season. The Varsity League of Legends team, the SHS Gatekeepers, beat Natick High School, and the Varsity Rocket League team, the SHS CEOs, beat Southwick Regional High School to win. Coach Steve McKinstry and student representatives Jerry Do and Riley Crowell will address the community this evening. So welcome.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having us. My name is Steve McKinstry. I'm the sports coach at the Shoesbury High School, and very happy to be here tonight. I had a quick presentation I just wanted to give for the public just on quickly what esports is all about and the accomplishments of our esports teams.
I'm going to share that right now, Coach McKinstry. All right. Thumbs up if you guys can see that.
Looks good. We're asked a lot what esports really is, and it's so up and coming. Even just a few years ago, really, we didn't know what it was. So just a quick, quick rundown. Esports actually stands for electronic sports, but it's not just video games. It's not sitting in a room isolated by yourself and plugging in with a controller and headset and playing by yourself the entire time. It's competitive gameplay, organized teamwork, and some really strict set of rules. Esports is all about teamwork and communication, strategic thinking and leadership. So the same things that the physical athletes show on the field. We're displaying that electronically in the same fashion. Just a little bit of background information on how fast it's exploding. There are about 440 million fans worldwide. So teams that are polled generally come out, about 72% of teens say they play video games regularly. So it'd be silly not to try to pull those teens in at the high school level and try to get them involved in a team and have some of the same leadership skills and grow in that fashion as our traditional athletes do. There are a ton of scholarship opportunities that are quickly coming. Colleges are jumping on boards to really grab high school esports players and get them in their programs. It's really a good time to be a gamer and capitalize on some of this. And kids love it. So 72% of kids play video games. They love it. They love being around their friends. It's good stuff. Our next slide is just all about Play Versus, our sponsoring agency. They worked with the MSAA, not the MIAA, so not actually a sport, I suppose. But the Massachusetts School Administrators Association is sponsoring it with Play Versus. And in the fall of 2018, we started Season Zero exclusively with League of Legends. We came into the scene, we were one of the first five states, Massachusetts was in there. And we came in with four teams that season, and the Gatekeepers were formed. We went in with a quite a different group of students. We had some graduating seniors last year that left us, but we did come home with a state championship, Season One, which was spring of 2019. We introduced our Rocket League team, which was Riley and his group. And Shoesbury High has won every single state championship since. So we're holding all seven state championships right now in both games. Pretty good. And I'm going to pass over to Jerry Do, our senior captain of the Gatekeepers. Joe, if you could just go back one slide. Thank you.
Hi, so my name is Jerry Do, and I was the captain of the fall season. So as a quick summary, League of Legends is a five versus five multiplayer online bio arena game. So each player has a different role that encompasses many unique responsibilities. And the objective is to destroy a structure called a nexus in each base. So this was my team's roster for both seasons. So our roster was considerably different compared to last year because of graduating seniors. This year, we had four seniors, one junior, and one sophomore. So the roster was me, Trevor Dodson, Justin Dirk, Jack Doyle, Sajed Ziad, and our substitute, Rowl Martens. So this was our bracket for the spring season. In the first round, we had a bye. In the second round, we played Newton South High School, Blue Team. So Newton South was the school that we played in the Season Zero championship. So they were a pretty tough team to beat. In the third round, we played Braintree High School before advancing to the finals. In the finals, we played Natick High School. We put up a great fight, but we managed to win 2-0. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic, we were not able to play in person. So we couldn't take a team picture in the end, but it marked our fourth win in a row. So this was a picture of us at the Season Two Fall State Championships at Helix Esports place in Foxborough. Here, we defeated Acton Boxborough Regional High School 2-0. We all had agreed that this was the toughest team to play against, given how some of their team members were ranked in the top 500 players in North America. Starting from the left is Coach McKinstry, then Sajed Ziad, then Justin Dirk, then me, Jerry Do, then Rowl Martens, then Trevor Dodson, and finally, Jack Doyle. And now for Rocket League.
So I'm Riley Crowell. I'm a senior at Shoesbury, and I've been a captain for the Rocket League team since Season One of Play Versus, which was spring of 2019. Rocket League, as an overview, is basically just playing soccer with rocket-powered cars, and you try and score more goals in a five-minute game than the other team. My teammates were sophomores, Trevor Perduda and Sky Pemberton. And as a team, we've won three state championships together. And I'm very confident in Trevor and Sky's ability to win more in the future, because they're great players. This season, we played Sutton in the first round of the playoffs, and then faced off against Southwick Regional in the state championship. They were a very solid team, and they kept it close the whole series, but we ultimately took the win home. And this is a picture of us at Helix Esports this fall after winning the fall 2019 state championship over Andover. It was a great experience to play at the new venue at Patriot Place. And we were one of the first people to use the venue, which was an awesome experience. And if you guys have any questions for us, we'd be happy to answer them.
Great. Thank you, everyone. That was a great presentation. The committee have any questions or comments? John?
Yeah, just a quick question. First off, congratulations to all involved. I've been
I've been following this since you started that first season and noticed you have about five seniors. What does the roster look like for next year? And it sounded like Riley, you're pretty confident in the team's capabilities to do it again.
Yeah, so going into next year, we're going to go in strong in Fall 20. We have two of our players on the gatekeepers are coming along in the fall, and we'll be able to have a team rebuild. We do have multiple League of Legends teams, so we'll be able to piece together a team to defend the state titles. And as far as Rocket League goes, I have absolute faith in Trevor and Sky to defend those titles as well. So we're hoping to hold them.
Great. And just remind us again, how many teams compete statewide?
So statewide, League of Legends, I believe this past season had about 32 teams, and the Rocket League, I believe they had 16. Every season, it varies a little bit, but yeah, it usually falls in the 3, 30, and 16.
Nice. Well, Shrewsbury's the team to beat, so congratulations.
Anyone else? I'm not saying anything. Congratulations. And I know back when this started as a mother. Go ahead, Jason.
No, Ms. Effernan was raising her hand.
There's so many people. You have to wave your hand.
There's a lot of people. I know. I've had to jump around. I just wanted to say I'm sorry to cut you off, Sandy. I'm very excited about this. I have to also say that my sixth grader, I recently mentioned this to him, and he was like, what are you talking about? I can play video games, and that's like, you know, a part of school somehow. So just it's so exciting to see how you're developing, and congratulations on your win. Can I ask a question, and maybe this is best to the coach? Do you have, the teams seem pretty male-dominated. Are there young women who are participating as well? Or do we just see that by nature, boys are more interested in video games generally?
So our Season Zero team did have a female on team, and she did compete in the state finals, yeah. And this past season, we also did have another female. So, yep, we do.
Awesome. Awesome. And it's exciting stuff. Thank you very much.
I think everyone looking, nobody's waving. Yeah, just, I was going to say, as a mom, when this first came on our agenda a few years ago, I remember saying, what is esports? And my son had to explain it to me, and I still look, are they just playing video games? And how does this work? And I think when you learn about the teamwork, what goes into it, it's quite an accomplishment. And it's, I know how to describe it because I don't, I'm not a video gamer, but people I know who said, this is such an amazing thing. It's a big business now. Like Mr. McKinstry said, colleges are offering scholarships, so it's a wonderful thing for Shrewsbury High. I think we also have the best logo, and I'm looking at the teams. Was that designed by someone at the high school?
I did reach out to a graphic designer to have that one pulled in.
Yeah, that's a good one. It stands out. And I thought it was interesting because the day of the championship, I have a 28-year-old who is in sports apparel, and he starts texting me how you had won again the state championship yet again. And I'm like, how do you know this? He goes, oh, and he works for a pretty big company, and they're actually watching this stuff online because they're looking to see what's trending, what's going on. So I think you guys have some bright futures ahead of you, and it's a big industry now. So congratulations. You're just like frequent flyers. Every time you go, you win. So congratulations. Dr. Soder, any comments or questions?
Just briefly, congratulations to Coach McKinstry and to the students on their championships. Again, this is a really incredible level of success that they've achieved. And I think that, as was mentioned, it represents really a level of teamwork and perseverance and skill. A lot of things that we're trying to help develop in our students as part of our Portrait of a Shrewsbury graduate. And I think these students exemplify lots of those different characteristics and traits. So thank you to Jerry and Riley for presenting information tonight, along with Coach McKinstry. And congratulations to the teams and bravo.
Congratulations. I'm sure we'll see you again. Thank you so much. Okay, next on the agenda, which is our year-end event that we are sad about, but we're really happy to celebrate with. It's our staff recognition for retiring staff members, and Ms. Malone will provide the information.
Sure. So thank you, Mrs. Fritz. So 22 faculty and staff are ending their educational careers with the closing of this chapter of unusual year for education. I feel like probably their last three months was the most challenging that they've ever faced in their careers, and they certainly deserve their retirement. So many, many people are on the call who are retiring. We do have a handful of our professional faculty who will speak and say a few words. But first, I'd like to recognize our paraprofessionals. So Mary Benjamin has served 15 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from the Walter J. Patton School. Donna Collins has served 14 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from Parker Road Preschool. Deborah Dernan has served 12 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from Shrewsbury High School. Sharon Laramie has served 16 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from Spring Street School. Jane Panetta has served seven years in Shrewsbury, and she has retired a little earlier in the year from Parker Road Preschool. Kathy Mangan has served 24 years in Shrewsbury. She is retiring from Shrewsbury High School. Hal Newman has served 16 years in Shrewsbury. He's retiring from Oak Middle School. Cindy Toszewski has served 21 years, and she's retiring from Sherwood Middle School. And Nancy Watson has served 48 years in Shrewsbury. She previously served as a teacher, retiring from Coolidge, and then worked part-time as a paraprofessional. And so she is now retiring for the second time, and this time it's from Spring Street School. We have so much appreciation for our paraprofessionals. They are the glue that holds schools together. This is the largest number of retirees I've seen in my eight years in my role from the paraprofessional ranks. And it's very gratifying to see that so many truly made long, productive careers here with us. And we appreciate all of their accomplishments so much. So thank you to all of you. Thank you very much. We're going to move now to our secretarial and administrative assistant retirees. And I know we have on the call Barbara Barassa. I can see her face on the screen in front of me. She has served 26 years, and she is retiring as the School Secretary Administrative Assistant from Parker Road Preschool. So you can imagine all the contributions to family and students across that career. And we also have Gail King. She served eight years in Shrewsbury in two different sections of time. She is retiring as the School Counseling Department Administrative Assistant, or what used to be called the Guidance Secretary from Shrewsbury High School. So another person who provided a good deal of commitment and help to our students, our families, and our staff. I'd like to move on to our teachers and professional staff. To be very kind, I'll just remind all of you to unmute when it's your turn to speak. And I have a couple of people who prefer not to speak, but I would still like to mention their names. Nancy Bedard has served 12 years. As an educator here, she is retiring as a media specialist from Oak Middle School. Norma Chico has served 10 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. She is retiring as a physics teacher from Shrewsbury High School. Linda DeRozier has served 13 years as an educator in Shrewsbury. I think you saw her picture on the screen a little earlier. She is retiring as a special education teacher from Shrewsbury High School. Anna Ernest has served 19 years as an educator in Shrewsbury, and she is retiring as a Spanish teacher from Shrewsbury High School. So now we come to Sarah Honig, who's one of the people who has agreed to speak. She's been with us for seven years as an educator. She came here just a year after me. She is retiring as both our Director of Foreign Languages and as a Latin teacher at Oak Middle School. She's also taught Latin at the high school. So I'd like to ask Sarah to say a few words, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. When I was looking for a job in administration, I was told that Shrewsbury had an excellent reputation, and you all proved that correct. This has been the best place I've ever worked. I was a department director before this for seven years at a different school. And of all the different places I've worked, this has been really the most rewarding place. I think it's, part of it is because of the people here and how supported I have felt from all the administrators at the different schools, and I've worked with the Sherwood and the Oak and the high school people. Everyone's been very, just so helpful, such a great resource. I want to single out Amy Clutter and Todd Buzidlow, who are my supervisors, who were always ready to roll up their sleeves and help me through any particular challenging situation I was facing. And were really willing to brainstorm with me and help me and guide me. And my staff, I just can't say enough good things about them. They are dedicated professionals. They care about kids. They've worked so hard to engage them during this remote learning period, and they've been taking, doing free webinars, learning new strategies on how they can engage kids. So they've really, I just can't say enough good things about them. And I just, I really feel like they're the best, and they deserve the best. And so I know you're facing very challenging times ahead, but I just want you to know, I'm just very grateful I had this opportunity. Thank you so much. I'll always remember you fondly and just so many great memories. And I'm going to be living in Southern Vermont. So if you're ever in Southern Vermont and you want to try some goat cheese, my husband and I have a business there now. We just started, so. But it's a bittersweet time for me, because I'm going to miss everyone. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Sarah. And now I'd like to move on to Amy Johnson. And I know Amy is here. She has served 33 years as an educator in this town. She's retiring as a science teacher from Oak Middle School, a woman in science many years ago. And Amy has also agreed to say a few words for us. So Amy, if you want to unmute, you can go ahead and make your comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for this opportunity. Isn't life funny? So many beautiful colors, so many possibilities. More than half of my career has been spent working on the seven gold team in the Shrewsbury Middle Schools. Five red was dynamite, got things started for my first six years at the original Shrewsbury Middle School, followed by seven blue, seven gold, seven yellow in the old Sherwood Middle School, seven green for two years when Oak Middle School first reopened, and then back to seven gold for the rest of my wonderful career here at Oak in Shrewsbury. Rainbows are beautiful, and so have all of the amazing students and faculty I have had the privilege of working with over the past 33 years in Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Isn't life complicated? Who would have thought that a microscopic thing like a virus could change our life, our routines, our world so dramatically? It is times like these that help us revisit what is most important in our lives. Things like our health, family, and happiness. We don't often take the time to think about the things that we are so lucky to have, like a quick interaction with a friend or a smile as we pass another person in the hall, on the field, or on the street. The things we do, the choices we make, affect those around us. It is important to make good choices and to consider how our choices might impact others. Sometimes things come easy, but often we must work hard for the good things in life. But that just makes us appreciate them that much more. Isn't life grand? Sometimes it isn't what you say, it is what you do. Sometimes it's not what you say, but how you say it. Here's a few things to think about from someone who spent 35 years in the classroom. Treat others the way you would like to be treated. Seek happiness. Take a walk. It's a good way to clear your mind. It is nice to be important, but it's more important to be nice. We are all responsible for our own happiness. Life is never simple or easy, but it's worth it. Look for the beauty that surrounds you. Tomorrow's a new day. Life doesn't come with guarantees, only opportunities. As several good friends wrote this year, being a good teacher includes wearing many hats. I am so lucky to have had a wardrobe of support to help me enjoy a lifetime of blessings. I encourage all of you to look for those moments in your life when you can make a difference to someone else. Those are the events that make life worth living. I am grateful for the kaleidoscope of images, memories, and shared moments that swirl around in my mind from my seconds, minutes, days, and years in the Shrewsbury Middle Schools and all of the people who have touched my life in such a special way. With warmth and appreciation, thank you all, Amy Johnson.
Thank you so much, Ms. Johnson. Very much appreciated. I'd like to also mention that Nancy Lowry has served 18 years, and she is retiring as a mathematics teacher from Shrewsbury High School. And now I'd like to take a moment to read statements on behalf of two retiring educators. The first is Kathy McDonough. She's served 17 years here in Shrewsbury, and she's retiring as a math teacher from Shrewsbury High School. On her behalf, she would like me to thank the district for taking a chance on her after her first 17 years, which were in another district. She deeply appreciates the perpetual professional growth she has experienced here and especially wants to thank Mathematics Director Jean Marie Johnson for her tireless mentoring. She concluded her statement to me by saying that she regards herself as incredibly lucky to have had 17 years at Shrewsbury High School. I would also like to mention that I have a statement from Gail King. I had read her name a little bit earlier with the, she's the Guidance Secretary who has retired, and she has also given me a statement to read. She says that she would like to thank the school committee and Shrewsbury Public School Administration for the recognition this evening. It has been an honor for me to work for this excellent district. The dedication to students and families that I have observed, demonstrated by all in school employees, no matter the role, is something this committee can be extremely proud of. I genuinely appreciate the opportunity that was given to me to be part of this outstanding team. I'd also like to mention Kathy Sabelli. And I was fortunate to work on a project with her these last couple of years, got to know her a little bit better, too. She has served 27 years in our community. She is retiring as a science teacher from Oak Middle School. And now we're moving to our final two retirees, both of whom are speaking. Robert Sessino has served 32 years as an educator, and he is retiring as an English teacher from Shrewsbury High School. Mr. Sessino, would you like to make your comments?
I have one unmuted. Yes, thank you. Before I read what I've written, I'd like to say hello to Jason, my former Advanced Placement English student. And Jason, I remember well that you were also one of the leaders for speech and debate at that time. And I'll tell you that with a lot of pride, I'll be voting for you once again in just a few weeks or less than that. Okay, so that's for Jason. I have written some things down, and I'll read from what I've written. Thank you. So I want to thank you for honoring us in this way tonight, and I know we all sincerely appreciate it. In my 37 years of teaching, change has been the constant feature. When I began teaching in Philadelphia in 1982, the personal desktop computer had just arrived, big and clunky as it was. Since then, the innovations in computer science and technology have multiplied and accelerated. Without question, these changes have affected education profoundly. And yet, despite all the impressive technological changes, the basic facts of human nature have not changed. At its best, teaching and learning is a face-to-face, human-to-human interaction. It's people helping people. It works best when we're physically present. Learning is social and emotional and intentional. Learning is social and emotional and intensely personal. This is true especially for young people. Young people need and want the guidance, the structure and the wisdom that adults with life experience can provide. And they want us to provide it up close and in person. We know this is true and it's not just true. It's beautiful. The personal relationships I've enjoyed with my students as we explore literature and the subject of English together have been the most gratifying part of my career. Since the middle of March, the coronavirus pandemic has temporarily forced the closure of school buildings and required that we hold classes remotely. This experience has proved all the more strongly that teaching and learning work best in person. When the science deems it safe, students and teachers will meet together once again in the classrooms. And when that happens, I know that Shrewsbury teachers will do their very best. We always have. Next fall, I will watch this historic, once-in-a-career pandemic unfold from the sidelines with the greatest respect for all that you do for Shrewsbury's young people. I'm very grateful that I've been allowed to play such a personal role in the lives of so many Shrewsbury students and their families for more than three decades. And just before I, I finish, I'd like to thank very, very much the, the entire English department that I've worked with. That includes, of course, Liza Trombley, our department chair and all of the fifteen, sixteen, I, I forget the actual number of talented, hardworking people. And I've just so much enjoyed working alongside them. So I want to thank them very much and thank you very much.
Thank you. Now I would like to turn it over to Katie Zimmerman. She has served twenty years in Shrewsbury and she is retiring as the, the school nurse from the Calvin Coolidge School. Katie?
Thank you. Always last. I just want to thank you. As a school nurse, I had a wonderful and a unique opportunity to take care of our students, both their physical needs as well as their mental health needs. I've worked very hard to know each and every one of my students, their families, their challenges they face daily. And the years have flown and it's been wonderful. And I can't wait to see what the future will bring. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard to, to applaud on, on, on the Zoom, but I think we all feel like that's the natural thing to do. We, we are so gratified by the contributions all of you have made to us. I, I see faces of people that I, I loved and known for the last eight years myself. And I just want to thank everybody for their contributions. And I'm sure that Ms. Fritz or Dr. Sawyer will also have a comment or two to say. So I'll turn it back over to them, but thank you.
Thanks, Barb. Before I make any comments, does the school committee have any comments they'd like to make? I'm looking around. John?
Yeah, just a few quick comments. First off, thank you to all of you for your years of service to our students and our community. Really appreciate it. This is one of my favorite meetings of the year. Obviously not to say goodbye to say, but to say thank you. Truly just remarkable years of service from teachers, paraprofessionals, secretaries and professional staff. Appreciate the great sentiments that Sarah shared about supportive work environment. And then Mr. Sessino, I want to thank you for the outstanding graduation speech last week. I know as a, as a parent of a graduate, it really meant a lot, you know, very moving and so appropriate for the times that we're living in. And then on a personal note, Ms. Johnson was my son's, you know, science teacher. Appreciate your support of Jack and Seven Gold. And then to Katie Zimmerman as well, appreciate your dedication to the safety and health of our students at Coolidge, obviously being the, the son of a retired school nurse myself, I want to say thank you. And again, just thank you to, to everyone for their, for their years of service in Shrewsbury.
Thanks, John. Again, thank you. I, you know, we talk about results a lot, you know, as a school committee, we look at measurements and these results would not be where they were if it wasn't for the educators and everybody involved with our students day to day. It's not an easy job. There's a lot of issues I think the public probably doesn't even know about that goes on in classrooms and you power through it. You make sure that students are always number one. So Sarah, when you said bittersweet, I think it's bittersweet for the district because we have a great group of educators who are having deserved retirements, but we're losing a lot of talent. But you've made Shrewsbury Public Schools a better place just for being here. So on behalf of the committee, I'd like to wish you all the best, a long and happy and fulfilling retirement. Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
I also want to congratulate all of our retirees. As the report and as Malone mentioned, they represent a collective over four hundred years of collective experience that we'll be losing to our detriment, of course, but they, we continue to have, they've, they've had a great impact on the colleagues who remain behind, who will still be practicing. I know that as they go into retirement, one thing that they certainly have the benefit of is knowing that the work they did was very important. They affected positively the lives of literally thousands upon thousands of children over their careers. And that is something for which I and on behalf of the school district and the community, I'm enormously grateful. So thank you for sharing your talents and your time and your efforts with us in Shrewsbury. We wish you nothing but the very best for a healthy and happy retirement and thank you again for all the contributions you made.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer, and thank you again, everyone. Okay, next on the agenda, Dr. Lizard, our Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing, along with Mary Simone, the General Manager of the Worcester A.C. Hotel by Marriott and Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager for the Town of Shrewsbury, are going to have a presentation. The first part will be on the Colonial Connections Program and the second will be on the Wellbeing Report. Turn it over to Dr. Lizard.
Thank you very much. And Dr. Sawyer, will you put the presentation up? There we go. Thank you. Well, thank you for inviting us to speak with you and the Shrewsbury community this evening to share some of the ways in which community partnerships are being developed in our school communities while we focus our attention on the mental and physical well-being of students, staff and families. Tonight I am joined by Mr. Kevin Mizikar, our Town Manager, and Mary Simone, General Manager of A.C. Hotel by Marriott Worcester, two of the eighteen members of the Colonial Connections Advisory Board. During the first ten weeks in my new role last summer as Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Wellbeing, I had the opportunity to build this dynamic team. I am indebted to each of these individuals for the time, wisdom and commitment they have devoted to this critical programming. Before passing the speaking baton or talking stick, as our students would say, to Kevin Mizikar and Mary Simone, I want to draw your attention to the messages that are highlighted in this first slide as they exemplify the work of the many individuals and teams with whom I have had the privilege to collaborate over the past eleven months. I look forward to continuing elements of this important work as I transition into my new role as Acting Principal of Patton School. Next slide, please. At this time, I invite Kevin to share.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Lizard. Thank you to the members of the school committee and Dr. Sawyer and the rest of your leadership team for allowing me to talk about Colonial Connections Advisory Board and the great work that we get to do with an extremely talented group of people that Dr. Lizard put together. First, just some background, as you see on the screen, Colonial Connections is a partnership between the Shrewsbury Public Schools and the business community. And we've been focused on providing and finding ways to provide opportunities for our students to develop real-world, real-world skills and career awareness in order to better prepare them for success in both their education and eventual career path. So it's been a, a real joy to get together with this diverse group of business leaders and members of industry to talk about how we can really pull the students into our organizations and provide meaningful opportunities for them. I was really fortunate to be able to, what I feel, kind of expand my role and my time in the classroom, which is very limited, through this, the Colonial Connections. So one of the first things that were done through this group and through Dr. Lizard was Sherwood students working to interview municipal employees at the town hall. They've done, it was an amazing experience with a diverse group of town employees who were interviewed by the students and every employee was so fortunate and so grateful for the experience that they had and interacting with the students. And as you all know, it's always a joy and certainly was no exception for our leadership team at the town hall. Speaking of the expansion of what I get to do or my opportunities to be with students in the classroom, we really undertook kind of a real-world project with Dr. Alawisi's American Government Class. And in the past, I've been able to join with the class and have conversations generally about local government. But through conversations with Dr. Lizard and Mr. Alawisi, we found a project, which is the wonderful Edgemere redevelopment project. The former Edgemere drive-in to really bring the students out of the classroom and learn more about what local government does. You can see on the left side of the screen is myself and the Assistant Town Manager, Kristen Lass, and we were in Dr. Alawisi's classroom, providing them with an overview and trying to enlighten them about the diverse efforts of the town hall employees and public safety officials for a project like this. I'd just like to take a second to, to read a quote, a response from one of the students that were in the classroom during that day. And then we're eventually able to join with local government officials in the field. So actually two brief comments. So the first one is states, quote, "What I now understand better is the function of local government. In the beginning, I barely understood what local government was. That's why I took this class. However, after learning about the Edgemere project and meeting with officials in charge of it, I realized it's more than just mayors and councilmen. My group was assigned life safety and building codes. And when we sat down with the officials in charge of the department to discuss their involvement in the project, I was amazed and confused at how much actually goes into local government and how plan becomes building." So, you know, it was one thing for me to always, or to have the opportunity to speak generally about my role in Mr. Alawisi's class, getting these students out into the town hall and really learning about a specific project, in my opinion, was so much more meaningful. And, and the final comment that I wanted to share from you, from the student on this project was, quote, "This project drew a lot of connections with other aspects of my life. I'm applying to colleges to be an environmental engineer. So talking to a woman with a jo- job similar to what I'll be doing eventually was very informative. One interesting thing that I learned about solar energy is that Selco limits the percentage of power you can get from solar energy, which I heavily disagree with. This kind of knowledge is highly applicable to my field and my meeting with Patty Sheehan almost renewed my excitement for environmental engineering." So I think that's another great example of the connections that we're making with the students and certainly much more exciting than just I sit in front of Mr. Alawisi's class. And finally, if you could advance the slide, just one more picture for me. On the right-hand side, you know, our recently retired, it's hard for me to say, Selco General Manager, Michael Pell, during his spotlight interview with Sherwood's student. And on the left is Town Engineer Andy Truman, sharing his experiences with the sixth grade team at Middle, Sherwood Middle. Mr. Sherwood's working construction in England, England, prior to attending Oxford University for civil engineering. So it serves our community very well. And here he's again sharing the details of the Edgemere project. So being a part of CCAB was both meaningful for me because I think it's a real connection with the community. The more we can help connect with the community about what local government does, the better off we'll all be. And certainly another opportunity for staff to integrate and be exposed to, to the students at all levels. So thank you, Dr. Lizard, for your hard work in pulling this all together and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much, Kevin. At this time, I welcome Mary to say a few words.
Thank you, Dr. Lizard. Good evening, everyone. During this past year, the Colonial Connection Advisory Board, we had four meetings, two of them which were at local businesses and one of them was at the high school and the other one was a virtual meeting, of course. Just being on this board, we have a very dynamic board that we put together and we had two goals this year that we looked at. And of course, we all wanted to increase the access to experimental learning for the students and also have career access for all of our students. Very small groups that we put together in presentations, we were able to identify some plans that we were enabled, that we'll have, that we'll be able to give to the students for them to have access to positive role models, envision a career and build connection to the business community. We also had great discussions in length about previous programs that we have done at the high school and we laid some groundwork for future programs to achieve some of the goals that we put down. As many of you know, I've been involved with the MOVE program for several years. And I think that that was probably one of the great examples of how school and business partnerships can be successful. The success of that program was not only because of the students, but because of the administration and the teachers who supported the program. The students benefited from that hands-on learning experience, the real-life situations in that high-paced industry of the hotel business. Also being successful in the workplace by applying some personal manners in bride, in a variety of settings. These programs also benefited from the business partner. We found the increased morale amongst our associates and a sense of pride in their jobs when teaching their skills. We also benefited from a pool of skilled employees when we had job openings. As a result of being involved with MOVE, I've had the opportunity to become a mentor many of, to many of the previous students who went through the program, who still reach out to me today for advice and job opportunities. Now more than ever, as a business, as the business community is reinventing their workforce and business plans for the new normal, the Colonial Connection Advisory Board can be a catalyst to inspire businesses to get involved and engage our students. It's time to connect with our business community and to shape our partnerships for future success. On the next few pages, you're going to see the names of the individual who made this incredible advisory board. It's with Dr. Lizard's leadership that everyone has committed to another year and we look forward to the success of this board in providing the best educational opportunities for the students of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mary and Kevin and Dr. Sawyer. Thank you for forwarding the slides. There are two slides with the names of our eighteen members on the Colonial Connections Advisory Board. And while we're looking at those, if school committee members before Mary and Kevin depart, if you have any questions or comments for them or for me, we're welcome to entertain them. So thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody, I can't see the committee right now, so speak up. If anybody has any questions, just go ahead and speak up.
This is, if I might, I just wanted to commend Dr. Lizard, Mr. Mizikar and Ms. Simone for participating in this program and for leading this program. I think it's always fantastic when we can give students connections to real-world experiences beyond the classroom. And I know that that's something that we'd like to see incorporated really all over the curriculum at all levels. But it's, in the past, it's been rare where we've had the staff resources to be able to focus on that. And I think it's a real benefit of the leadership role that Dr. Lizard has been in to make these relationships and these connections on behalf of our district. So I just want to express my appreciation for the work and I'm really pleased to see the results.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone else?
Yeah, Sandy, just really quick, just echo the sentiments. I think the, you know, Colonial Connections piece of this inaugural role was always very exciting for me. And I all knew Dr. Lizard had done similar work at Sherwood Middle School when my daughter was there, bringing in local businesses into the classroom. I think it really is very impactful to take on those real-world projects. As, as Kevin mentioned, I'd like to thank everyone involved with this, you know, effort. It's really meaningful and appreciate you sharing the comments.
Thanks, John. Not hearing anyone else? I don't think so.
Not hearing anyone else? I don't think so. Thank you, Dr. Lizotte and Kevin and Mary. I too think this, in this first year, Dr. Lizotte laying this groundwork is so important for students. I think when we especially get to the high school level, you're thinking about what maybe major or career you want to go in. And having these types of connections with people actually working in the field is just so important. Because something you might think is great, you may learn about it and say, no, and go down a different path, which is wonderful. Or you do have an experience and it's like, yes, this is something I do want to pursue further, either through college or, you know, trade or going to the workforce that way. So, thank you for laying this groundwork. I'm glad that it's going to continue, even though you're going to be on hiatus. I think it's so, so important for students to have these connections with adults in the community as well, to help guide them. So, thank you.
You're very welcome. Kevin and Mary, you're dismissed. I know you have a gazillion other things to do. So, thank you for being with us. Thank you.
Dr. Lizotte, just before they go, just for one moment, your mind, I just want to also thank Ms. Simone and Mr. Mizikar for partnering with us. I think that, you know, Ms. Simone was a longtime partner to the MOVE program. And we're excited with her new role in Worcester to connect with her in a different way through the Colonial Connections and benefit from her leadership. As far as Mr. Mizikar, again, as he described, going beyond, he's been very generous with his time to connect with Mr. Alouisi's class at the high school. But this really made an ongoing connection with lots of different municipal leaders that I think our students benefited from. And frankly, it was an unintended consequence. When we created this position, we certainly looked to connect with the business community. But to make such a rich connection with our municipal departments and helping our students better understand their own community, as well as the potential for careers in municipal leadership and work, I think was a real bonus. So, I want to appreciate, I thank Mr. Mizikar and the other leaders in the town for their time working with our students. So, very much appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe, if you could forward to the next slide, please. Okay. So, as you may recall, school committee members, our students, our legacy pictured on the left here was a program that occurred at the start of the school year and was a culmination of several conversations with alumni and current SHS students held last summer in person and over the phone. Each of the individuals pictured here contributed to the first professional development day for educators in late August. As you know, the 90-minute session consisted of a brief presentation by each of these 14 individuals, each of whom shared their perspective regarding ways in which their education in the Shrewsbury Public Schools influenced them, while also offering insight into ways in which our schools could strengthen student experiences. Their messages were processed by faculty during the faculty meetings that followed that day. On the right side of your screen, you will see a picture of a Zoom meeting. I shared a photo a few weeks back. But thank you, thanks to the incredible work of Kathleen Kohane and Michelle Biscotti. The first-ever virtual mentoring series took place in April. The goal of the programming was to provide Shrewsbury High School students with opportunities to engage in informal discussions with graduates of Shrewsbury High School about life after high school as they explore potential opportunities for work, career, and continuing education. Pictured here in this meeting, our alumni Kyle Vedder and Asta Gupta, both of whom facilitated the computer science Zoom session with SHS students. Kyle completed his undergraduate studies at the University of Massachusetts Amherst and is completing his doctoral studies at the University of Pennsylvania. Asta is entering her junior year at the Ohio State University. Kyle shared, "I am happy to provide more information to students about what to expect while pursuing an undergraduate degree in computer science. What to expect when applying for jobs and internships, and the lessons I learned along the way." So that series proved to be very beneficial and we're looking forward to continuing that work. The next slide, please, Joe. Pictured here, we have, going to talk a bit about the Colonial Fund. And again, the, really stressing the importance of establishing an alumni network through outreach. Kathleen Kohane and Michelle Biscotti, along with the efforts of the Colonial Fund Advisory Group, a creative and knowledgeable team of parents and community members consisting of Sarah Port, Mark Murray Jr., Rajesh Valakbudi, Deb Mooney, Ginger Conti, and Mike Albertson, have really come together and shared ideas that have surfaced during our meetings. On the left here is a community Colonial Fund outreach postcard that was sent to several alumni during our, it was actually sent to 9,000 SHS alumni in an ongoing effort to build an engaging, dynamic alumni network. Pictured on the right is the new Colonial Fund logo that consists of the actions that are the focus of our work. Innovate, create, collaborate, inspire, and challenge, along with our mission, supporting our district's greatest needs. During, some of the ideas that have surfaced during our meetings have already come to fruition, including the communication sent by Kathleen, Michelle, and me to Shrewsbury families, community members, and alumni yesterday. The request for donations to our schools has already yielded over $9,586 from 58 donors. The average donation is $167. Two alumni made donations on behalf of their children. We have gained four new monthly donors. And as we stated in the donation ask sent yesterday, our district is now confronted with incredibly difficult choices about how to spend significantly fewer budget dollars in the face of greater need. You can help alleviate some of this burden by making a gift to the Colonial Fund. Every dollar we raise will go towards the greatest needs in our district, both current and future, and help preserve the quality of education we have all come to expect in Shrewsbury. The Colonial Fund is an unrestricted fund that has been invaluable to all of our schools, sponsoring innovative projects and programs that were too costly to offer without sacrificing existing curriculum or staff. Today, the Colonial Fund is more important than ever as we face a multimillion-dollar budget deficit that will challenge how we educate and captivate our students in the coming year. Next slide, please, Joe. To make a donation, this was shown in the letter as well, and we'll be sending this in a variety of formats. But you can scan, donors can scan this QR code with their phones or visit our Colonial Fund website. Next slide, please. Slides 10 through 14 showcase many of the, some of the many ongoing efforts under our strategic priority, enhanced well-being of all. In this slide, we have a picture on the left of the SHS Volunteer Fair facilitated by Shrewsbury High School mathematics teacher Denise Satterfield and media specialist Emily Bredeberg. Pictured on the left is student Preston Karp, joined by fellow classmates. Pictured on the right is another example of enhancing well-being of all. You see Shrewsbury High School educator Kelly Lawler and her family participating in the very successful virtual 5K that was created by members of the Oak Middle School faculty, along with other district leaders. Next slide, please, Joe. We are very grateful to the 1540 Connection and the Michael Bodge Tribute Fund for providing our students with lifesaving lessons. And these presentations were provided a couple months ago. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with Mike Bodge, Shrewsbury High School graduate Mike Bodge embodied kindness, selflessness, courage, and strength. The Shrewsbury Public Schools, and specifically Shrewsbury High School, is grateful to be the beneficiaries of the efforts of Mike's family, friends, and classmates to bringing 1540's lifesaving, early-detection education to today's Shrewsbury High School students and staff in his memory. Again, thank you to 1540. Following their presentation, they had several questions by students and staff, along with offers to get involved in their work. So, it was just a very wonderful opportunity and it's ongoing as they share their resources and curriculum with us. I'm not going to read from the next two slides. Slides 12 and these next two slides highlight really what the district is doing and working on in the area of social-emotional learning by coordinating classroom, school-wide, family, and community practices. And you can see Castle's the five focus areas upon which we are spending our time and energy in exploring and ensuring that our students and staff have the opportunity to strengthen in those ways. We know that programming needs to be sequenced, active, and focused, as shown on this slide. And the next slide, please, Joe. The ongoing efforts of social-emotional learning and the Shrewsbury Wellness Advisory Committee, of which Dr. McGee is a part. And thank you for your involvement. But we know that students are more successful in school and daily life when they engage and believe in themselves and in others. There are some statements here just of ways in which we, working with our students to become more confident learners. We know that when students feel good and confident and joyful and challenged, they are more likely to come to school, they are more likely to not engage in poor behaviors. And we know that there are just strengthened feelings of overall positive well-being. So, we continue to focus, again, attention and time and attention to these very important areas. Thanks, Joe. Next slide. For staff, by staff wellness offerings, there were eight different offerings, including a few that unfortunately were not able to run as they were to begin the week that we left school. But I'm very grateful to those staff who offered Zumba classes, yoga, strength and conditioning. The classes, the idea was created this year to support staff in efforts for improved self-care. And we had classes run over these past 10 weeks. Two staff members came came forward and sent me emails in late March and early April saying, I just really want to involve, invite people to, you know, practice wellness and very grateful to them. You can see in this slide, this is a Pilates Zoom, or rather, Google form. We had 63 people participating across the district in this class taught by Katie Monopoly, paraprofessional at Parker Road Preschool at Wesleyan Terrace. Katie's also an extended school care provider at Coolidge School. So, thank you so much for the, to the staff for doing that. Additionally, I mean, so many, it's hard to capture in one presentation, all of the wonderful things going on. But we also had CrossFit here in Shrewsbury and Get in Shape for Women provide CrossFit free memberships to a few of our students in need, along with their parents. And those memberships were really just so appreciated. We also had Get in Shape for Women is just one other example. They came in and offered several classes to a couple dozen Sherwood Middle School students after school. And we're grateful to them again for their generosity. Next slide, please, Joe. Here we have a picture of some seniors, seniors versus seniors trivia competition. And thanks to the Shrewsbury Public Library and specifically Annie King, who created the trivia game for this event. Pictured here is Shrewsbury High School Assistant Principal Maureen Monopoly with an intergenerational team of trivia players, Shrewsbury High School seniors and seniors who frequent the senior center. Plenty of connections and conversations made for an energizing event. And this was just one of a few events that took place, thanks to the work of Ellen Dolan and Priya and a number of people at the Shrewsbury Public Library. We're grateful to Kelly Landini and the residents at Orchard Grove, who provided a wonderful brunch for the Young at Heart Chorus. They put on a free concert during, in the fall for all members of our community and our students served them brunch. And the whole reading project was a tremendous success. And I'm grateful to all of those wonderful people. Next slide, please, Joe. So communicating with the community in a variety of ways is something that I have worked to do to have accomplished over the past several months. My favorite communications meetings are those in-person meetings where I have the opportunity to meet with people one-on-one and in small groups. I've had the opportunity to share with the Rotary Club and the Shrewsbury Mems Club and a number of organizations just regarding my work and our work that we're seeking to accomplish across the district. Last summer, I had the pleasure of participating in over 40 one-on-one conversations with a variety of community members. Some I invited in, others asked to come in and speak with me and share their ideas and whatnot. And I cannot thank those 40 people, along with the several individuals and teams of people with whom I've met this year for sharing ideas, questions, and wisdom with me. Here on this slide is a picture of one of my smore newsletters. I also seek to strengthen and stretch communication through the Community Bulletin and through Twitter. And we have a new alumni group of the Shrewsbury Public Schools, Shrewsbury Schools Community on LinkedIn. So I encourage those of you who aren't LinkedIn to please do so and spread the word. Thank you. And next slide. Celebrating community efforts is another favorite task of mine. On this slide, pictured on the left, you see a photograph of Dean Park Pizza sign. As you know already, Dean Park Pizza employees donated $1,000 to our schools just a couple of months ago. They gave all of their tips over the course of several days to our schools to be used for COVID relief funds and for families in need. Pictured on the right here, we have a student at the high school who set up a free toilet paper stand in his neighborhood. And SHS alum Gina Sheehan took a picture of it and sent it my way. So we thank Hassan for his generosity back on March 17th and to Gina for sharing a bright spot with us. And again, I really love to spread or celebrate the kindnesses that are shared across our community. And I will continue to do so. Next slide, please. So in closing, I just want to So in closing, I just want to thank the students, staff, families, alumni, and community partners for all of your support. And I continue, and I will continue to ask for, for help and help in the way of, you've listened to Kevin and Mary tonight share ways in which they've dedicated time and energy to our students and our staff. I, I seek help from the community as far as funds go. If you find that you are someone who has $2 or $20 to give to our schools right now is the time. And we're just grateful for every donation again of, of time, talent, expertise, and funding. And I am again, just very grateful to have had the opportunity to serve the district in this role. And again, I look forward to continuing a few of the projects that we've had going on this year. While I focus my attention primarily on the Patton School community. I attended my first PTO meeting last night, which was a lot of fun. Wonderful people again seeking to do whatever they can for students and staff and one another. And that's just terrific. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for questions, comments. Thank you, Dr. Lozot. Any questions or comments from the committee? Not seeing anyone's hand. Jason?
Just a comment, I want to thank Dr. Lozot for this work and you know, it, it, of course, this conversation ties back to our budget situation. I lament that Shrewsbury is, is as dependent as it is on non-traditional sources of revenue. And this is a conversation we had a few weeks ago when we were talking about fees. Certainly, I wish even in a pre-COVID world, our district were more financially secure than it is. But in light of the Shrewsbury situation that existed before COVID and in light of the COVID situation, I just want to express that. I'm, I'm pleased that we've had the focus on drumming up these additional financial resources. And I want to thank Dr. Lozot and her team for their work in generating them. I truly wish that they were able to be a little bit more extra than they are. But every dollar is going to go a long way right now. So kudos.
Thanks, Jason. John?
Yeah, just really appreciate the work and coordination that Dr. Lozot showed in this first year of this role. You know, I know in addition to some of the, you know, great progress we've seen in, you know, cash donations and the, the in-kind services upwards of about $240,000. You know, just incorporating the businesses into the classroom, even the town leadership, something like that. Bringing town government into the class to expose students to something maybe otherwise they wouldn't be exposed to. As Kevin was talking about the Edgemere Development Project. You know, and just also, you know, connecting with alumni, I think really that first presentation we had during the kind of the kickoff week with the alumni and current students telling us and sharing their experiences in Shrewsbury Public Schools, I thought it was really impactful. Something I know I've carried with me throughout the school year, you know, providing examples of, you know, students taking different paths and just really thought it was really well done. So thank you so much for all the work you've done in this role.
You're welcome. Dale, I think you had your hand up?
I just, good presentation and thank you for all that you've done for us. I'm really interested in your developing the alumni network. And I wonder how successful you've been. And I see that you called upon them to give some guidance to students. Have, has there been any thought also about surveying the alumni with regard to their experience in Shrewsbury High? And what things were, you know, we could improve on?
Yeah, so Kathleen and Michelle have spent, have spent a lot of time gathering addresses of alumni, including home addresses, email addresses. The postcard effort resulted in a few hundred, maybe upwards of four or 500 alum giving us, providing us with their information. Not just information, contact information, how I, I would like to get involved with the schools. I'd like, I'm able to give a financial donation, I'm available to visit classrooms to speak about my work. So we have, we are generating that information and we have sent ways in which they can get involved and contacted a few people specifically. The Alumni Mentoring Program came about as a result of all of the alumni who contacted us after receiving the postcard. And we then sent an ask. So those people who offered to share their work in computer science or share their work in venture capitalism, those were the, they were the facilitators of these group meetings. And that is the work that we seek to continue. So we're making, I would say, a strong progress as far as finding people. But there's work to be had. We're, we're missing some classes of alum. Yes.
With regard to what worked and what didn't work with regard to their education, you know, if they had some advice to give the school as to what things they felt were particularly helpful or what they could have used or what they took that didn't help them at all?
Yes, and those insights came out in the meetings. They were shared in the meetings that we had in April. And, but we need to continue that work in a more, just in different ways. So that is on our, the top of our to-do list.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Lindsay, are you all set?
Yeah, no, I was debating. Sorry. I guess I'm wondering if some of the, I believe Dr. Sawyer mentioned earlier in the meeting, the attempts to reach out to relatively recent alumni to get their perspective, particularly of color, to ask about their experiences. Are we building off of that? I'm guessing that's coming from the work you've done and we're able to call it a little bit, but, but maybe, maybe those are divergent efforts.
They're, they're one in the same effort. So Dr. Sawyer and I and a team are working along with the high school administration to identify students. We have some students already who have said, "Count me in," which is wonderful. But we are looking to expand that group and that network. So that work is starting and actually had started a ways back. So we, we're on it. We actually have a meeting tomorrow.
I think that work, that work is so important as you connect with alumni and and we learn about their experiences and we hope that having just a little bit of distance that we can get some, our honest and critical feedback and sometimes feedback that might be difficult to hear, but that's probably the best place for us to really have that opportunity. So I'm, I'm glad we're, we're finding more ways, you know, beyond just finding, finding career goals for young people. There's lots of stuff you've talked about tonight that I think is really important, but, but this piece of work, we know, we know we have, we have a lot of work to do.
Absolutely. Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lozot. I think your report shows a broad array of things that you have laid the groundwork for. And that's really important with this role because so many things are, are part of education that aren't just classroom education. And all these pieces, including the Colonial Fund dollars, like Jason said, money that we do need to supplement the appropriated budget. And the connection with alumni I think is important because not only for funds, if somebody wants to donate, but experiences, what you had with the students, recent graduates, talking to new or, you know, upcoming students is so, so important. And I think the other part with the social emotional learning, you've laid that groundwork for students and teachers to have the ability to incorporate that into their daily practice. And of course, there's more work to do in all these fields, but we do have a really solid foundation to build on. So thank you very much for everything you've done. It's been a busy year. You've had your hands in a lot of things, but we'll really appreciate, appreciate it of it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sawyer, any comments?
Yes, please, Ms. Fritz. Thank you, Dr. Lozot, for the presentation. When I reflect on what the expectations were for this role in the outset that we had determined, I think that, as was mentioned, you know, some really outstanding work had been done, has been done this year. Especially getting a lot of these initiatives off the ground and to break that inertia is always a challenge. I certainly feel good that for a school district that has never had a district-focused coordinated approach to building connections with the business community, both for support but also to provide learning options for, or opportunities for our students. And I know Dr. Lozot and Colonial Connections team were actually planning on some summer internships that were going to begin this summer that got waylaid by the pandemic. But in the future, that's certainly something we're looking to extend through that project. It's the first time after many years of suggestions and, and questions of what we could do. We have some capacity to start to build that alumni network that you were just speaking about, which certainly there's no reason that we as a public school district can't build the same kind of robust alumni network to support us as is typically done in, in the private sector for education. But of course, just like private schools have, we need the resources to, to make that work. And Dr. Lozot brought that to the table. And also in terms of generating connections with community partners in a variety of different ways. Not to mention the fact that Mr. Wensky referenced that generating almost a quarter million dollars in donations, about $95,000 in pure cash donations to the district and about 140,000 plus in in-kind donations that really benefited us. And just to remind everyone who's watching, that's at the initial investment for the school district of $0. Dr. Lozot's salary this year is funded entirely by the Colonial Connections partnership we have with Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union, to whom we are indebted for that partnership. Additionally, beyond that, Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union funded the entire stipends for Michelle Biscotti and Kathleen Cohen. So that entire team, they each work part-time in their roles in development and volunteer coordination. Did not cost the school district a single dollar, yet yielded a quarter million dollars in benefit. And that's a return on investment, I think any organization would be more than happy to have in, as far as that work. So, and then, you know, finally, just to reference, I know that next week, the, the school committee will be holding my annual evaluation and I surveyed the community and our staff for some feedback in advance of that. And of course, these are very difficult times relative to the budget and people are considering how we may look at it. And I recognize that there were a few comments with perceptions that somehow the, the school district level administration had become quote-unquote "top-heavy." And sometimes referencing this particular position. And just to want to reference that in addition to the fact that this position didn't cost a single dollar, but generated almost a quarter million dollars for the district this year. It was the first addition of an administrator at the district level in two decades. And over those two decades, obviously, the school district grew quite a bit by literally thousands of students. So as far as a district administrative team, that one addition at no cost generated a tremendous amount of value during the past year. Both monetarily and also based on the many, many experience that were just described in the report. So I thank Dr. Lozot for her work along with the team that she's worked with, all the volunteers that she connected with. I, I do believe it's, it's laid an excellent groundwork. I'm disappointed, of course, that the fact that due to our financial situation, Dr. Lozot will have to hit pause on many of these things or will move them forward incrementally while she focuses her time as the acting principal at Patton, with the hope that we'll be able to continue to resume this work in more full-fledged fashion after that, as things change over the next year plus, hopefully for the better relative to our financial situation. But I wanted to make sure the community was aware of those facts. I want to thank the school committee for supporting this and taking a risk a year ago to enter this partnership that allowed this to happen. And most importantly, thank Dr. Lozot for her many efforts over the past year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Collins will provide a report to the committee regarding the school department's release of use of the Beal Early Childhood Center building and land.
I can, I can start with that, Ms. Fritz, as well, if that's okay. Let me just get to my page here. This is more of a preview of a vote that I'll be requesting the school committee take next week at, actually at Mr. Mizikar's request as well. We have, over time, since the new Beal School Building Project came into view as a potential project, the question, of course, arose is what the town would do with the existing Beal School and that property once the new school was built and we move into it and begin to utilize that. From the get-go, my recommendation, and I know the school committee has concurred, is that the school department will not have any use any longer for that building. That's coming to the end of its useful life, certainly in terms of an educational capacity, nor the, nor that property. But in the number of years ago when Dr. McGee was chair, and in your packet, there's a letter that was sent to the Board of Selectment and Mr. Tapalo in particular for the Beal Reuse Committee that was established, signaling that the school department intended to, but then, of course, they weren't able to bind a future school committee, given that the project was in such an early stage at that point, I'm not even sure if it had been approved yet by the voters, maybe it just had been. At this point, the town is getting ready to move forward. They've done more work relative to the repurposing of that resource and land in the center of town. And this will be the first next week in a sequence of, of votes. First, the school committee, which will be recommended to vote next week, that contingent upon us vacating the property when the new school is ready and open, that it would be turned back to the town. Subsequently, the Board of Selectment will take a vote, essentially, and I'm not sure what the exact terminology is, but essentially labeling that as, as surplus. And then later on, when town meeting does convene later this summer, the town meeting is going to be asked to vote to allow the town to sell the property. And I know that the Beal Reuse Committee and Selectment have been working on a, an RFP relative to the kinds of development or use that they would like to see for that parcel of land in the center of town. So with that, I know Mr. Mizikar actually forwarded to me, it was too late to go into your packet. But the Town Council has created a, a motion for next week that essentially has a lot of language about the deed and where it is and of course, the registry of deeds. But that again, to vote that it will no longer be necessary for school purposes, contingent on the new Beal, early, new Beal School opening on Lake Street and us moving into that for occupancy. And then declare that it's no longer going to be used by the school department after that time. So that'll be an important step in the work that will be happening to move that forward. And in advance of that vote next week, I wanted to see if the school committee had any questions or comments at this point.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Again, we'll be voting on that next week, so. All right. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, under Finance and Operations, due to the magnitude of the budget cap that we're facing for the next school year, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will provide a big recommendation around the fiscal year 2021 compensation for non-union represented staff.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fritz. I'm going to share my screen here in a minute. To show you a couple of slides relative to this topic. And hopefully everybody can see that information there. Okay, so first is more specific information relative to the non-union employee groups, budgets, resources for fiscal '21. Again, for general context, you might recall that on the May 27th meeting, when we provided kind of an overall financial update relative to the fiscal '21 budget, I talked specifically about how we might try to navigate the situation financially going into fiscal '21 in that because we had already presented a $1.7 million budget reduction plan from Dr. Sawyer's original budget, that many of the places that one might normally go to trim the budget had already been done. So for example, curriculum supplies, a variety of various positions totaling 28.6 FTE. The elimination of foreign language at Sherwood Middle School, a grade-five team, a grade-three teacher at Floral Street School, several of the teachers that we're talking this evening or presented this evening as retirements, not backfilling those positions. So all of those things are already on the table. And that, in addition to that, that what we were estimating, and still estimating, is a gap of anywhere between 4.2 and $4.8 million going forward as a result of reduced revenue overall for the town. But then also new COVID-related expenditures. but then also new COVID-related expenditures. So I just kind of referenced the pie chart and, and said, you know, where is, where's the place to go? Where is the money in order to try to help make some movement towards that? And of course, it's in payroll or in an organization like every other school district where, you know, 83 to 85% of our budget pie is allocated toward staff salaries and wages. So tonight is the more formal recommendation that the all administrators' compensation for the upcoming year be frozen. That also, it's been discussed by Dr. Sawyer in just even tonight, having Dr. Lazzard serve as the acting principal at Patton School with Mrs. Bell's departure. And that would save us just about $120,000 next year. And then also freezing the compensation for all non-union staff. And that would save us just over $60,000. So a little bit more granular look at this, in this chart here, you can see the administration group, a headcount of 15 people, a total payroll associated for those salaries for next fiscal year, just over 2.1 million dollars. And again, if salaries were frozen, that would save us just over $47,000. The non-union staff, which includes all clerical support staff, IT staff, other miscellaneous non-represented employees, 64 individuals, budgeted just over 3.24 million dollars for all those wages. And by freezing compensation at the current level, would save us just over $60,000. So just those two combined, 79 people impacted and budget savings of just over $107,000. And then this slide just kind of adds all those various components together. And you can see that all of those three actions that the committee were to decide to formally take that action this evening would save us $227,264. So we're trying to reach in every place possible to make progress towards more certainty around navigating through fiscal 21. In addition to that and separately from that is the Extended School Care Program, which you all know is a self-funded enterprise program, if you will, in that those tuitions paid cover all of those salaries and wages along with their benefit costs and supplies and actually a $50,000 annual contribution towards building utility costs. You know, from Mrs. Isaacson's presentation in March, in your vote to set those rates for next school year was also implicit in that was a 1.5% wage increase for all of that staff. Again, we're recommending that all of those salaries and wages be frozen and that would save that program just over $33,000 as well. So at this point, you know, the, the recommendation is to take this action this evening. And what we're, what, you know, we're trying to walk through here is bringing a little bit more certainty to the, to those items that we can. And certainly waiting for the state budget process to unfold so we can see and understand what kind of state aid would be afforded to Shrewsbury in both Chapter 70 and the Special Education Circuit Breaker Program. And then the third big component in terms of trying to actually complete a budget for next fiscal year would be receiving more specific guidance from the Department of Education around what school reopening will look like and what conditions must be met. It's really hard to make estimates around staff costs and all other related costs and staffing levels until we know the conditions under which we're going to reopen schools. And if it is certain conditions or constraints such as limitations on the number of children in a classroom at any one particular time, that's going to be very likely more costly to present that educational program. And there's lots of concern across the nation and across the state about the additional costs related to reopening schools under very different conditions. So those are the things that will, will yet to occur and we're waiting for. But this is something that is within the positive control in terms of the non-union salaries and wages. And we think it's important to take control of that and bring certainty to those areas that we can at this particular time. So that's what we have this evening and I'll turn it over to, back to Mrs. Fritz or, or Dr. Sawyer, who might have some additional comments.
If, just briefly, thank you, Mr. Collins, and you know, it's certainly, I'm truly sorry and it's with regret that I do make this recommendation that our non-represented staff not receive any pay increase next year and that their compensation is frozen at this year's level. Essentially, of course, that has nothing to do with the quality of their work or how hard they're working. It has to do with this budget gap of, of very large magnitude that we need to address. And I don't really see where I could make a recommendation other than trying to avoid or partially offset some additional layoffs or furloughs that we might have to utilize, depending on the amount of money obviously that's available to us. So again, it is certainly a recommendation I, I don't like making, but under the circumstances, I feel that it is the most responsible one to make in the interest of trying to preserve our program and working additions to the greatest extent that we can. Would there, we'll have to answer any questions from the committee?
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we vote? Pat, can you take the slide presentation down?
Madam Chair. I certainly want to just appreciate the entire senior leadership team and the district leadership team. And every, every week we have a new, a new Excel spreadsheet of where are the places that we're going to, to trim. And that is, that is not, that is not the reason you be, you became educators. But it is, it is the mission we're on right now. And I know obviously none of us wants to be in this position. I am in support at this point in time and as Dr. Sawyer said, not because I don't think these people are doing wonderful work, but because we know at the end of the day that we are probably going to have to be making some staffing cuts and any dollar that we can save and mitigate that and ensure the quality education for our students in the future is, I think, the proper choice for us. But it is a really unfortunate time that we, we find ourselves in. And I just want to acknowledge all of the work that goes into every one of these as we calculate amongst a sea of uncertainty and try to find some little, little bits to hold on to. So thank you for all of, all of the efforts on, on our behalf.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else have any comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. I too support it and it's reluctantly because like Lindsay said, we know the people in our district worked extremely hard, probably more so through this pandemic than we even wanted them to because there's just been so many issues that we've had to deal with that we haven't in the past. So now to ask for a compensation freeze is difficult, but we do need to look to that future and if we can mitigate this gap and have some certainty as we formulate the FY21 budget, that will help us with our planning. So it's, it's an unfortunate fallout of what we're all dealing with. Okay, nothing further from the group? So may I have a motion that the committee vote that the compensation of all non-union staff for fiscal year 2021 be frozen at the level as of June 30th, 2020?
No move.
Second.
Roll call vote is required, Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, aye, motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our minutes from the school committee meeting held on June 3rd, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? I'm not seeing any, so they can be marked as accepted as distributed. We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, jet, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And the chair so declares purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association Unit A, Shrewsbury Education Association Unit B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. And we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourned for the evening. I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
No move.
No move. Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Lindsay?
Aye.
Dale?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.